This conference will now be recorded.
Before we get things started this evening, I ask that Randy first read the roll call.
Sure. All meetings are electronically recorded. Participants' names will not be displayed during the meeting. All participants will be required to mute their microphones when not participating in the dialogue. If a participant wants courtesy of the board or wants to make public comment or has a question on a specific topic, they must type their name and address into the chat feature. The meeting facilitator will identify and call on the individual requesting to speak. If someone is participating via phone, there will be an opportunity to ask questions, comments, once the individual has unmuted their microphone and identified themselves with name and address. If someone has requested courtesy of the board prior to the meeting via email, the facilitator will identify and call on the individual who has requested courtesy of the board. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. These rules have been established to ensure professional meeting environment.
Thank you, Randy. Could you do the roll call?
Commissioner Wong. Here, Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah.
All right. Next, I'd ask if everyone could please rise and join us for the presentation.
... States of America and to the Republic of America. One issue under the...
Thank you, Randy. I'd like to note that the board did meet an executive session to discuss personnel matters right prior to this meeting. I'd also like to note that all public sessions of the Southway Health Township Board of Commissions are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for the public access. So this evening, we have a slight shift in our agenda. We have moved our board meeting minutes since we have reason to discuss tonight to the end out of courtesy to the people in the audience, since there's usually much discussion around them. So we've moved those to the end. So we're going to go right into our presentations this evening. And first, on the agenda, we have a presentation, "The Finance on Veterans Policy." Scott, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. One of the suggestions that came out of the 2016 through 2019 audit report was for the township to draft a fund balance policy. Tonight, I am not requesting any formal action. I am merely giving a presentation designed to educate and inform. Maintaining a fund balance is essential to the preservation of the financial integrity of Southway Health Township. It's specifically advantageous to both the township and its taxpayers. And as such, we should have a policy which will allow us to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs. It will allow us to secure and maintain investment-grade bond ratings. It will offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfall. It will provide funds for unforeseen circumstances related to emergency perhaps. And it will also ensure taxpayers' level of services do not degrade over time. There are five types of fund balance that any given government entity should have. Those are non-spendable, restricted, committed, unassigned, and assigned. I will briefly define each. Non-spendable fund balance, these are amounts that are not inexpensible for. These things are inventory. We can't really convert inventory to cash. Therefore, it's non-spendable. Restricted fund balance is the second type. These are amounts that can only be spent for specific purposes stipulated by external parties, either constitutionally or through legislation. So think of your state high rate aid fund. That's a restricted fund balance. Any monies that are left over at the end of the year, that's a restricted fund balance. The third type is called the committed fund balance. So these are amounts that can only be used for specific purposes determined by formal action through the board. Then there's assigned fund balance. These are amounts intended to be used by the government for specific purposes. The final amount is unassigned fund balance. And this is most important for our fund balance policy. Unassigned fund balance includes all amounts not contained in any other classification, and it's the residual classification of the general fund. So unassigned amounts are available for any legal purpose. To give you some numbers to throw in a day-to-day realm, at the end of 2020, our township had $362,000 worth of non-spendable fund balance. The only other category that we had was assigned fund balance other than unassigned. In the assigned fund balance, we had $630,000 for 2021 budget appropriations. In the unassigned fund balance, we have $6.8 million. The initial suggestions that are on firm, as well as the government finance officers association, suggest in their fund balance guidelines for the general fund, all of these things are being taken into account. The GFOA recommends no less than two months of general fund revenues in a given year. For us, that's 17% of our general fund revenues. The range suggested in a draft that the Finance Committee is working on is that our fund balance policy would be no less than 20% of our general fund revenues, but no more than 30%. This draft needs further revision to include our enterprise funds as well as the general fund and to include edits in language. Although formally not enacted, we as a staff are preparing the 2022 budget to plan for this policy in the future to operate within these guidelines. I'm encouraging every commissioner to have an open mind with regards to a fund balance policy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have some comments. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation, which is consistent with our past conversations. I'm very pleased to see the work that's being accomplished, identifying a year ago that we need a fund balance policy. And now with the suggestion from the accountant, it's now being done under your leadership. So thank you once again. We do need to include the VOC accountability in the fund balance policy as well as the township manager and finance director responsibilities. And as you've noted, the current document includes the fund balance for the general fund, but work that still needs to be done would add the enterprise funds, which are the worst work in refuse.
That is correct. So for enterprise funds, the term for fund balance is called net position. It's going to be confusing when I present this again as a net position policy for the enterprise funds. Don't be alarmed. It's just a different wording.
Scott, when will we be talking more about the fund balance policy and more finalized version? How's that all going to go out?
Let me get to the budget, and we'll talk after that.
That sounds great. It's a good plan. That's a great presentation, by the way.
I do.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Excellent. Any from the public? Any in chat?
I did not have it open, but it is. Chat is now open if anybody would like to chat. I'm not seeing anything.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening, we have no ordinance since for consideration. However, we have a variety of resolutions for consideration and possible action. The first resolution is a resolution amending Resolution 2016-23, granting the conditional approval to a waiver of surface subdivision and land development review and approval requirements of Southway Health Township Sado for a plan entitled Abad... I always say wrong, Lehigh Valley, and granting an additional waiver relating to Sado Section 312-39E. Mr. Manmore, for us, we do have the capacity.
Yes, I will just give a brief introduction and then hand it over to the applicant. So the application started in 2015. There were several extensions. The project was active for a while with, as many things were with the pandemic. So the applicant has looked to ramp up and start the projects again. And it came to our attention and their attention that the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan, which is approved by the Conservation District, had expired. So they need to submit a new plan for approval. They're seeking a waiver from that plan. We had an additional application come in and look for that figure as well. 1960 Herald Avenue, if you remember that one. The big difference here is the Abad had an approved plan. It just expired, and then 1960 did not even submit. So I think for the board's consideration is any enforcement-related issues for that soil erosion, sediment control plan. I'll hand it over to the applicant. Tony and I have spoken, and we kind of have some questions and some discussion on enforcement of that plan. So with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And it's the board. I'm Zachary Cohen. You're on behalf of Abad Lehavich. And it's my pleasure to represent this organization for the last five years that we've been here, maybe six, I'm not sure yet. But I think tonight might be the culmination of all of this. And I'm going to... Miss Morgan, you tried to pronounce the name of...
Did I do pretty good?
It's Dick D'Acquisto. But it was well stated what we're here for tonight. A waiver of the erosion plan requirement. And what is unique sort of here is that we've already achieved this milestone. It's been reviewed by the Conservation District and approved. It's just with the lapse of time that it has expired. And we were literally ready to put Charles in the ground. Finally, we have an excavator lined up after COVID and years of, you know, I don't want to say struggle, but years of hard fundraising efforts. We're finally ready to go. And then it was just discovered that there's this one last hurdle that we need to get over. And what I think is a favorite reference here is that nothing has changed since we got the approval. The regulations are the same. We're going to be implementing the same approved plan in our design and on our drawings. And so we're not detiating from what was already approved. And the Conservation District has essentially already stated that they would reapprove this if it were submitted today. It's just but four that will take an additional at least 30 days and several thousand dollars, which would push our project past... Unfortunately, it would take us past the winter time. We wouldn't really be able to with that delay to get started. We don't really need to. We'll get this important part out of the way. So what we're here for tonight is seeking a waiver of the requirement to reapply for a permit that has basically already been approved and that the Conservation District said it would reapprove. And we're still willing to comply with all the conditions that were previously imposed. We're just asking to sort of backtrack things and finally get started.
With no... And I think you said this, but there's been no changes to the plan?
Correct.
The same as it always was?
Same plan, yes. We're happy to answer any questions. I have with me Rabbi Alburn, who is the president of the organization. And hopefully, the questions won't be too technical and engineering sense, but we're happy to do our best.
So let's see if there are any.
Yeah, just to clarify, is there change in the plan?
Correct.
Of the Conservation District?
No, from a regulatory point of view, we've been advised that there have been no changes there. It would really be a formality, just going through the reapproval process, admitting the same materials under the same standards that have already been approved.
And it's been mentioned that there would approve it reapp...
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
I know. Just to say the question. First of all, Attorney Cohen. Thank you for being here. I've been pretty consistent in my belief that we're reasonable and we're appropriate for should make every combination as we can to support people in the community, especially a faith-based community as yourself. My faith is very important to me. It's why you're going. So most certainly, anything that we can do from my perspective help you guys in the process that can be cumbersome is what we should do.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong.
I... Yeah, I have a couple of questions because I'm not familiar with the project. You know, I don't have any background. So it sounds like you want us to grant this waiver so you can proceed. And it sounds like you're even ready for construction. Is that correct?
Absolutely. What this is, if you're familiar, on Powersburg Road, I think it was.
Oh, I know where you're located. Right next apartment.
Yes, yes. And we're looking to build an expansion onto the building. It's about 5,000 square feet. And this has sort of been a long...
Right. I know those basics. I was mainly interested in the status. So this process, we've got 15 pages of information in front of us.
Yes.
And there's a couple of paragraphs here that said, "The applicant shall do the following." And basically, it says, "Comply with the comments from the township engineer submitted in January 2016 and also public work submitted in January 2016." I imagine if you're ready for construction, all of these issues will have been addressed.
Absolutely. We had the pre-construction meeting with the township already, and the excavator is lined up and ready to bring the equipment here. This is really the last formality.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Zach, I just have one question for clarity.
Yes.
You're asking for a waiver of the township's Sado requirement to make this submission again to the LCCD. You're not asking for the township to waive any kind of the LCCD requirement that they would, correct?
Correct. And we're not asking that we be allowed to deviate from what has been approved already.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, President. If you might, I guess this is a clarification I would have is that in conversations with the district, what the difference between an approved D and S plan and a plan that is drawn but not approved by the district is enforcing. At this point, with an approved D and S plan, if there's a mud or runoff event, that creates problems for any downstream neighbors. The Conservation District will be able to enforce their plan and take whatever means possible. Normally, the first step is check the B and P's, make sure they're functioning, do those sorts of things. It could trip down into the force of 56 inspection, maybe fines, or stop any projects, because things are... If you're to approve the waiver, the district won't come out for any enforcement action. So I think that that's the difference from the regulatory stance that you're... Absolutely. If you will.
I did bring that up. I...
No, go ahead, Diane.
I actually wanted to bring up. I looked up the ordinance that is requested to be waived, and it does the first three paragraphs do talk about the LCCD. But as we go on to numbers four or five, A, B, C, does talk about enforcement and the LCCD's role to ensure compliance with specifications of the plan and, you know, watching over site runoff, disposing it to the point of discharge, when handling existing and potential runoff of the development by designing adequately... Designed to adequately handle storm runoff. This is certainly something that caused me some pause and concern as I read through this. Certainly, where that is located, it's right on Holdar Road. We've got Jason, close development, going in that store. The LCC does provide oversight and inspection of the project. The approval letter that was submitted by the LCCD to you to approve this project so they stand ready to assist you. And they'll be wanting to come out seven days prior to each earth disturbance. So personally, I feel it's important to have the oversight of the LCCD as you're going to be... Your current structure is a 3,000-foot building, and a pretty substantial addition is being added, a 5,120-square-foot addition. It's going to be a lot of earth being moved. It seems to me that we need to just wait 30 days. It makes sense to make sure we have everything in line to take care of the township's needs as well as helping in the oversight of your project.
Well, we have no objection. This is a creative way to keep that oversight in place. That's not the issue for us. It's really a timing issue of that. Been many, many years, but we're literally ready to go right now. And delaying after the winter would be detrimental to the project. So that's a concern here. I don't know if there's another way to... We would reach to voluntarily submit the oversight if that's the issue. But the delay would be the hardest part for us to swallow at this point.
Is there a way to me that we can grant the waiver with a condition to follow the old, the original ES plan? Is there something that we can do? I can understand your concern, knowing the construction, how it is right now and getting, just even getting supplies, you know, as a result of the pandemic. You know, from a timing standpoint, I'm sure that's a huge concern for yours. Is there a way? Because if there's been no changes, this is a technicality, that we can work with the agency to still have whatever oversight we need if there's concerns of enforcement, but still allow them not to have to go through the whole process over again?
Our office can inspect all the B and P's on the plan to make sure they're put in in the correct manner. I think that enforcement's the difference that we have here is that if for some reason those B and P's aren't put in, it does create a problem downstream or a problem to the neighboring property, we don't have the enforcement method that the district has. That's why the township ender ends with a memorial understanding for district for items like this. So that the district would agree to maintain and, of course, all disturbance in the township. So I mean, we can inspect. We can go off of their old plan and everything they said is true, that the old plan appears to be adequate. But at the same time, it's really just enforcement. If for some reason the contractor does everything right, there's no mud events, it wouldn't create a problem. It's when you go the other way, when you have large storm events or any other problems, if they don't voluntarily clean their site or...
We can't put something into the resolution to cover that? Is there, from a legal standpoint, Joe, is there something we can do?
It's definitely thinking outside the box. It's definitely something unusual. But if we were to include provision in the resolution and avoid it to be a problem, certainly, my office would be glad to work with Tony to proceed with some sort of enforcement mechanism. And as I've heard everyone talking, I just jot down a few thoughts for everyone's consideration adding to the resolution something along the following lines. Applicant consents to Southway Health Township Oversight, Inspection, and Enforcement of Stormwater Infrastructure and Functioning in the same manner that the LCCD ordinarily would have the right to do.
That would be a very acceptable condition for that.
Which would still give the ability for enforcement and... I would agree to that.
Commissioner Morgan, I think her or our little horse manager would like...
We can do the enforcement also because if they're not following what's supposed to be done, we can serve a stop-work order, and they have to stop everything till everything's correct.
So from the township's standpoint, we can do a stop-work order?
Yes, we can do a stop-work order, and then they can't start till everything would be corrected. We could have Pickcock take a look at it, Mike Elias, myself, go out and make sure everything is correct before they could start again.
Obviously, all this discussion is around concern should the contractor have an issue or there be runoff or mud or like we spoke about. That is a huge concern. So we want to make sure that those issues are covered. But it sounds to me, from Attorney Zader and from Herb and staff, that if we can kind of tweak the resolution to some degree, we might be able to cover all those enforcement needs.
And so that would be five of those conditions, and we want to assure the board that we're not trying to strip those responsibilities.
Commissioner Morgan, I just want to add one more thing. It'd make sense to also put in that resolution for the applicant to set up a PSA, professional service agreement with township, since we could incur costs, to provide the oversight through a pick-up, as solicitor's office.
Your medical...
Not an issue. Yeah, that's fine.
Correct.
As part of their original application in 2016, that is in place.
Excellent. Look at you. You guys are arguing. Are there any other questions or thoughts on that?
The only other comment I'd like us all to consider, certainly, is setting precedent here. Before the planning commission last month, there was an inspired plan that was brought forth that asked a very similar question, had to do with the LCCD. And the planning commission did not grant it, invoke that night, and are considering having them go back and speak to the LCCD again. We're talking about 30 days here. This board has heard numerous concerns from a resident over the last year and a half from another construction site in town. There's been considerable issues with mud and runoff and issues in roads. We have the ability to have the LCCD be our enforcement without going through all of these additional machinations tonight. So I personally think it makes sense to have them go back to the LCCD and go through our procedure, as we've asked others to do, be consistent.
Can I ask a question? What exactly would occur during this 30-day period?
It would be an application to the Conservation District and the payment of an $1,000 application fee and then waiting for the approvals, which would be at least 30 days and push our construction schedule till after winter.
Just a point of clarification, Herb, did you indicate that even without meeting any where you change, there would still be some sort of...
Yeah, it's in our stormwater ordinance and our permit that we can enforce it also.
So we're going to need to... We're going to approve it. We can approve it.
Well, let's get... Yeah, you're right. Are there any other thoughts or comments from the board? Are there any from the public?
I'm sleeping here.
Like, is there something you want to hear?
No, thank you.
Um, so are there any in chat?
Not yet. I forgot to open it. We'll wait a little bit. Nothing yet. Nothing in the chat.
So that being said, if there's no questions in chat, we do have a resolution for us for consideration. However, I would suggest the resolution be amended to allow for the enforcement language that Attorney Zader has mentioned and also ensure that the... Randy, what you had mentioned is in place in compensates or whatever costs might be involved.
Which, yeah, is agreeable to...
In any event, yes.
So, and I'm not really sure what that language would be. Attorney Zader, you had read it. I can't say for being...
I'll be glad to do it again. I'll be glad to do it again, because it's a pleasure of the board. Add to the existing resolutions, which, by the way, I know has been consented to the applicant. I and township staff have received that today. The wording to add to the resolution would be, "Applicant consents to Southway Health Township Oversight, Inspection, and Enforcement of Stormwater Infrastructure and Functioning Requirements in the same manner that Lehigh County Conservation District ordinarily has the right to do." And before action is taken, I would just ask, Mr. Cohen, Attorney Cohen, you have a client. That amendment, should that be in motion for, is that acceptable? And this resolution approval is acceptance, signed off by the court here.
Absolutely, yes.
And I request that be reflected in the minutes, should this be for her vote?
I make a motion... I, I make a motion as, as read by Attorney Zader before moving forward with the waiver sets up.
I'll submit a motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan. We have a second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I roll call them?
Commissioner Walk.
My last comment is, this is pretty loose. The oral readings of amended resolutions. I don't think this is the way our government should proceed. In general, as, as a process, my preference would be that we actually take the time to draft the resolution, put it back in front of us. Nevertheless, nevertheless, I think considered, I will vote yes based on this reading of this resolution.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, I do not agree you should move forward without the LCCD's enforcement oversight.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution extending the conditional approval granted to a waiver of review and approval requirements of the Southwest Township subdivision and land development ordinance for a Tillman Holdings LLC plan entitled Tillman Street Storm Rampage.
So again, I'll give a little bit of background and then hand it over to the applicant. This project is the Ollies shopping center. They were granted a waiver of land development. And there were conditions in that resolution in 2018. And then COVID happened, things expired. They missed the request for an extension. So if you're requesting a retroactive extension. So I would suggest that the applicant kind of discuss the current situation, just a little bit of background. And any status as to addressing the conditions of the existing resolution. With that, I will hand it over.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bill Ernman of the Bureau of Land and Properties. Just to comment on a couple of things based on what they just said. As in the case of the previous one, it is a COVID driven thing. However, I can assure you that was not the choice of the applicant. He lost his previous tenant. The fact that it's retroactive is because he has recently got the new tenant for the project. We would like to assume that. That's really the reason it's retroactive. Typically the case, if it's an ongoing project, the extension would have been requested before it expired. So the issue is and anybody in the business world knows that things have really changed significantly compared to the app. He was fortunate to be able to get a tenant, but it was after the conditional approval. The other two things very important to point out is that we are not asking for relief with any required the conditions of approval that were put on the plan originally, we still buy. Every one of them we'd have to satisfy and we don't enough satisfy this, but we do have to satisfy. The only thing that's important to point out is if you're familiar with that building, this is not an expansion of the building. This is basically closing in. The overhangs on the side and the front of the building. So it's essentially closing the building. Important point there is there's no additional impervious, et cetera. So there's no stormwater issue. But it's important to stress that we fully intend to comply with all the conditions. We just need the additional time. The resolution takes until June of next year, 2022, will allow sufficient time to do that and hopefully eventually get documents. Then that's kind of a quick overview. I can answer any questions. And if you have questions about the user that's coming in and cetera, it's a different tenant. Again, the project is exactly the same in terms of physical improvements.
Part of the building that is fenced out.
Yes.
It was the garden centers.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Sutton. It is the garden centers of the left of it. As you're all aware, we did a major renovation to the facade of the building, cleaned up the entire property. Thank you very much. We're very proud of it. So to the left of it, we wish to enclose it. We had a tenant that didn't work out financially. So we have a very good tenant that you're going to read a lot about if you watch the Netflix series Billions. You'll hear Bobby Axelrod mention GoPup. Gentleman by the name of Andrew Requedes on the, on the video from GoPup. And it's exciting because they're a $15 billion company and they want to come near community. So we welcome them and hope you do as well. Yes, there will be, yes. There's any other questions? Let me answer them.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? You're on.
Nothing in the chat.
All right. With no further questions, do I hear a motion?
Sure. I'm sorry. Just had a question for the CD department. I've not had a request like this before, this before where land development has expired 14 months or 15 months ago and we retroactively, is this? Have we done something?
It is unusual. I, I believe this is either the first or second time in my, my term here where that's, that's occurred.
And we waived the review process initially in 2018. So how detailed process did they go through to get, did they just come before the board?
They submitted plans as, as any other waiver request would do. It was reviewed by staff, township engineer. We all determined one of the, one of the main issues was there's no additional impervious surface. I don't believe there was any additional water and sewer issues. It was simply an expansion of the interior space from what is enclosed with the overhang to what is enclosed to include the overhang. So that is an expansion of the interior space, but otherwise the building was not expanded at all. So due to those factors, we determined that it would be a good candidate to waive the land development process. And the board then agreed with our assessment and granted that.
I think if you were there's process, I mean, it was waived the process, not a waiver of the requirements.
Correct.
You take it at thorough review and if you look at the previous resolution approval, you see there's quite a few conditions in it. So you get a very thorough review, but it's a process in this way.
Correct. Thank you. And just to follow up, Brad, you said there was no additional impervious surface. So we're adding 149 parking spaces. So those will take, will be created in the current concrete that's in the overhang where the garden center was.
Yeah, actually in the existing block.
Thank you very much. That being said, do I hear a motion extending the conditional approval granted to the waiver for the Tillman Holdings LLC entitled Tillman Street Storm Renovations?
I think the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a couple ruling there. So we have a motion by Commissioner Sutton. Would you like that? Second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I roll call that?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution, amending resolution number 2006-48, which granted preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Estates of Pheasant Hills 2, granting an additional waiver related to Sando, the section 312-36C 3A driveway grades for lot two. Mr. Moon?
Yes. So once again, I'll give a brief introduction, some background, and then we'll hand it over to the applicant. This is part of the Estates of Pheasant Hills subdivision. It's one of, there were a few lots that were recently sold and looking to construct. The specific section of Sando they're looking to for the waiver is for the driveway grade. It's a 7% standard and they're asking for a 10%. Typically with the grade considerations, we look for public safety's input. So the Public Safety Commission recommended for approval. They didn't see any safety issues with the driveway grade. So with that, I will hand it over.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Lear. I'll be representing the owner of that lot, Stuart Kravitz. Unfortunately is not here tonight due to religious reasons, holiday. But he just asked me to come in front of you. Tonight, we're really looking at a difference of a driveway requirement. The township allows a 10% driveway, but not within a certain roadway classification. So really, the project is the intersection down by the school. And on one side of the intersection is considered Collector Street. The other side of the intersection is considered a minor arterial. So if it's in the arterial area of that roadway, the maximum grade is 7%. The neighboring lot is allowed to go to 10%. So we're asking for the waiver just to be at 10% for a small section. It is a sloped lot that starts from the roadway back. Excuse me. About halfway through the back of the lot, it's very steep and then at the top of the lot, it's fairly flat. So the 10% grade would work better to balance the job and also would not really affect any of the safety concerns as previously mentioned when we met with them. Also, we submitted a grading plan and to show what that 10% would be. And I might include also that it does meet the township requirements and also does meet the the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requirements as far as a driveway as it would enter onto any state roadway, regardless of that classification. In fact, the PANDA requirements would allow a driveway grade so far of the edge of the cartway to go up to 15%. So we're actually less than what a state driveway would be. So we're going to see a concern for the, or I shouldn't say we're not asking for any relief that would be a safety issue for the driveway. It's going to mimic basically the driveway to the left. Give a harsh curve to the right and just go less than I think about 100 feet of the total of the, from 7% to the 10%. That's basically what we're at.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board on this request?
Yes. Okay. What's the difference between the edge of the roadway and the point where this driveway becomes 10%?
We are looking at roughly 60 feet.
Thank you.
How long is this driveway?
The driveway is basically 445, 450. There was also a profile submitted in that package that shows you those percentages. It shows you those particular grades.
Are there any, any other thoughts or comments from staff or engineering on this particular request?
Basically, everything that Mr. Lee said is correct in terms of it's acceptable by PANDA and the classification road is what says the difference between 7% and 10%. And these two lots in the subdivision are just on the other side of the changeover between arterial to platform. So everything Mr. Lee said appears correct.
Herman?
Yeah, we're fine with it. They're going to meet what the state wants as their setback off the cartway. I don't see a big issue neither with the 10%.
And just to follow up, an engineering endpoint. Runoff or with ice in the winter being that steep toward the end, is there any concern in engineering?
In terms of runoff, they are providing a large basin on their site and manage runoff from their driveway, pushing their driveway and from their house. So they're managing runoff. Obviously, there's a little bit of increased speed of runoff coming off a steeper driveway. But again, it's probably office is right since runoff's going off, you won't have as much ice in with the steeper road. So again, this is pretty, it's, it's, there are driveways in the township.
We, we are submitting a plan for their review to make sure that stormwater and those other items include this. We're looking for a slope right now. The waiver. So we are required to submit this grading plan for review and including before the building, before it's going to be constructed. We are taking care of this.
Right. When I was talking about runoff, I just meant for that particular section as it meets the road, just not create a hazard in the actual street. That's all. Not the whole site. It's like the rain garden over to the side. But just the
The actual entrance of the driveway is already constructed. So it's a state roadway. It's, it's already constructed back to their limits. So it's paved up until that point. We're not changing any of those conditions that are there. We're just starting and continuing that driveway from that point. So we're not changing initial. So what you see there is there today, you know, of the driveway. So it's not really having any impact correctly now. And again, we went through the drainage process to divert any water that's extended from that point to go into a basin. So there shouldn't be
Thank you.
I thought I had a question. So, so from the drawing, it looks like it's a circular driveway?
The driveway, actually, you're correct. It's going to go, a little hard to see. It's actually going to go, continue around the front of the building. Correct. And then go around to a garage, a three car garage in the back. Correct. But you're correct that there will be a small loop in front of the building. It's not just ending with a circle. It'll continue to go around to the back into a garage.
So are there two entrances onto Orfield Road?
No, only one. Okay. Yep, only one.
Questions from the board? Any from the public? Any in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. Do I hear a motion then to move forward with the a waiver relating to, I had to find my wording here for the additional waiver relating to the driveway grades for lot two for the major plan entitled Estates of Pheasant Hills 2. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. The second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I roll call?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton? Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a good one.
You too.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment for entry level position of patrol officers in the Township's Police Department applicants. They don't have the numbers, so.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Requesting permission for the board to approve conditional offer of employment to candidate number 47998, candidate number 60265, and candidate number 48138. And just to be clear for the public, this is just a conditional offer of hire, which allows us to initiate the background process for the hiring procedure to move forward. It does not mean they are going to be 100% employed by the township. It just means that we start the background process to get them employed in the future. So at this point, we are in front of you to request that those conditional offers are approved so we can move forward with the background process and then come before you again later to hopefully hire some additional police officers based on the 2022 budget.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this particular resolution?
Chief Tony, could you just, just elaborate a little bit more on what you just stated? So this begins the process that we are not bound to clarify the three. What cost will the township be incurring in this interim where the background checks are being done?
Essentially manpower hours that are based already into our budget now, as well as a polygraph examination for each candidate if we get to that point, which is approximately $400 per candidate.
And how long does this process take?
Depends on how quickly we can get hold of everybody that we need to interview. It's typically at least a month to two months by the time we get everything wrapped up and finalize everything. So it would be closer to the end of November, beginning of December, when we would actually even grant, if possible, an offer to fully employ somebody well into the 2022 budget process. I wouldn't ask for anything to move forward until we have the budget process completed.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? Any from the public?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat. All right. Do I hear a motion then to move forward with a conditional offer of employment as explained from Chief Dorney for the entry-level position patrol officers for applicants? Hopefully, I got these numbers right, 47998, 60265, and 48138. So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Law. Can I have a roll call though, please?
Commissioner Law.
Hi.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton? Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Dorney.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Next this evening, we have a variety of motions for consideration and possible action. The first is a motion to approve an amendment to access easement agreement between Southway Hall Township and the Hills at Winchester to allow temporary driveway access for Lot 230, the Hills at Winchester, Major Plan 2011-103. Dave and Tony, are you guys together on this one or no? Oh, no, you're stepping down. I thought I was coming up to the podium. Just Dave.
So.
Hi, Lisa.
This is a motion for access across the access easement. It came in through CD as part of the driveway permit. And then it's been discussions with the township engineer, township solicitor, and public works. There were no, they've worked through the agreement and everybody's in medical, as far as where. But perhaps here, the answer questions and the township engineer's listener are also here. And I believe the applicant is here as well.
Welcome. If you want to add anything, are you good?
I'm okay.
Welcome, Lisa and Bill. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Any comments with us?
I just wanted to mention, I felt was very important is that when you read the resolution, it's just the amended agreement.
You're my phone bill.
Sorry.
Very good.
Important thing to point out is that in the amended easement agreement that you noticed at the beginning, the language explains the purpose of the access easement. I thought it was important to have that as part of the public record that is, is there for a purpose. But other than that, it's straightforward and are obviously fine with it.
Thank you.
What you're saying is that the amendment.
The purpose will be. It's in there.
It is.
It's in, it's in the beginning of the easement where it describes what the purpose of the access easement was when it was created as part of the Hills at Winchester project. I just want to draw attention to that because I think that's important.
Right, any negative impact to the township?
Question was, is there any negative impact to the township that you can see, Commissioner?
Not a structure, there is not. But it was important, it is important to recognize that there's basically two driveway alignments. The one that the gentleman proposes to do now that will use the easement. The second one, which, which he is obligated to pay all the costs for, to reconnect it to the roadway if it goes through that easement. So there would not be any impact to the township in terms of cost or anything else. And that's, that's all set forth in the documents you have in front of you.
There you go. Any other questions from the board?
Just a question for just legal perspective. So as far as township, it'll just explain that the applicant will be responsible for all those fees. And we've got all of our agreements in place from that point.
Yes, that is correct. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the public? Any in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Do I hear a motion then to move forward with an amendment to access the easement agreement between Southway Hall and Hills at Winchester? Motion on the floor from Commissioner Seton. Second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll?
Commissioner Walk?
Hi.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. All right. Thank you. Will the board change again? You will, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. All right. Next this evening for consideration, we have a motion to approve the tower maintenance and removal financial security agreement between Southway Hall Township and Vertical Bridge, REIT LLC. Attorney Zager.
Thank you, President Morgan. Is there a representative here? Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. I think Phil Peart, this is Ned Barar, who represents for part of this bridge. He was going to be able to take the dollar.
Welcome.
Thank you. You're good. Just a little bit of background for the board. The Jerris Corporation has owned property, a cell tower. And that dates back quite a few years. And under the township regulations at the time, and regulations remain substantially unchanged, there's a requirement in connection with their cell tower that they're being bonded posted for, or at least some sort of security post for removal of that tower should it ever become inoperable, not used, obsolete, et cetera. And as I understand it, the Tower Original Organization, they're going to be acquiring that tower from Jerris Corporation. And so there's been requests the township to facilitate a number of things. And what's great tonight is really, when you look at this and the next agenda, it's essentially a swap out of security by which the Jerris Security shouldn't get to that point and would be released. But in order to do that, it's necessary that this organization have security posted in its place. Of course, makes sense that it happens first. So with that backdrop, the township engineer has reviewed the estimate for tower removal. The estimate back in timeframe when Jerris originally had this going over a decade ago was in the $30,000 to $40,000 range. Now, it's been determined that it's about $55,000. And so the security that would be posted by Vertical Bridge would be a bond in the amount of $55,000. And this is in documents, agreement that ultimately, if approved by the board, it would be executed by all parties, it'd be recorded in the courthouse, and there'd be a requirement essentially to keep that bond in place in perpetuity. And there's an opportunity every X number of years to review that amount just to make sure that with inflation, potential cost escalation should be increased that happen. It's not going to be an annual thing, just to be sure of. So as a summary of it, sir, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, well said. We do have the surety bonds every two years. I believe it's a policy, a company policy, that every year we look at them and start the process. So if there's any changes in the amount that the township, if there's an estimate increase, we certainly are going to abide by that. Company surety bond with that amount. So that's just our policy, our company policy. Policy has always been to write these surety bonds.
If that, if that number of changes, that comes back in front of the board again, that's, it just.
When it gets reviewed in the future, it's something that, I believe, township staff, we collaborate with the engineering, the solicitor's office, we talk about it, and then on the document, the next step.
Please.
And certainly, whether it's official action by the board or simply informing the board.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board on this transaction request? Any from the public? Any in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. Do I hear a motion then to move forward to approve the tower maintenance removal of financial security agreement between Southway Hall and Vertical Bridge? A motion on the floor from Commissioner Law. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Walk?
Hi.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
You've got it. All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a motion to approve a release of Jerris from the tower structure removal financial security agreement dated April 4th, 2002.
The board should have as part of your packet, under item 7C, a draft letter addressed to Bronstein, Jerris Corporation. And as I said a moment ago, this is the flip side of the same coin. And now that you approve the bond being put in place by Vertical Bridge, the Jerris Corporation actually would like to be released from a security obligation it's been under for the last many years while the tower has been there on its property. And the letter that you have in front of you, that nominally had in it in two locations, September 10th as the operative date where this lease of security would occur. Since you're here voting on October 6th, that would be the correct thing to put in there, just like it has at the top of the letter.
That would have to.
And if this is the pleasure of the board to grant this request, then I think it certainly would be appropriate to direct, whether that be signed by the township manager or president of the board.
Any comments or thoughts on this request? Any from the public? In the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. So we would need a few things here. We would, I'll make a motion then to approve, I'll make a motion to approve a release of Jerris from the tower structure removal financial security agreement dated April 4th, 2002 with a modification of the date in the letter. And quite honestly, I, there's, I'm happy to sign it as for president, but I certainly am ready to sign it as interim township manager as well as it's the pleasure of the board. A second motion. Do we have a motion and a second? Motion from Commissioner Morgan and second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Walk?
Hi.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Keep with consistency, I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the signature for the.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a motion requesting a transfer of $10,000 from finance salaries and wages to contracted services.
Do you need me, Commissioners?
What do you think?
Imagine the world that Southway Hall Township has the reputation as a paragon of financial integrity and reporting in the Lehigh Valley, where our journey can serve as an example to other communities and where we can be a pioneer to utilize technology to further our financial vision.
I feel like there should be music playing.
At the 16th Finance Committee meeting, I painted a picture of this world through the beginnings of a plan created by staff to the Finance Committee, and I'll do that tonight as well, which outlines a three-phase approach for our bright and hopeful future. The phases of the plan, which are intended to be concurrent, are designed to address three areas. The first being corrective action as a result of the audits from 2016 to 2020, internal upgrades, the second area, and the third, future financial reporting needs. Tonight, we are requesting a motion to transfer $10,000 from the finance salaries and wages line item to the contracted services line item in the finance budget, which will give us more flexibility in engaging consultants to assist with the full plan as well as help with some needed improvements in the finance department. We will need further funding for this direction in the budget year 2022, more details of which will be revealed and determined during the budget workshop meetings. This transfer will help us get started, obtain some professional guidance, and move the department into the future, which is of permanent importance for Southway Hall Township. Our total wage and budget for the year for the finance audit code is about $374,000. To give you some details, we have utilized $210,000 so far this year, and we need roughly $63,000 remaining in the year to, you know, when there are people through the end of December. Once we subtract various vacation time and holidays and whatnot at the end of the year, we expect to have about $79,000 left over in national at the end of the year. So that's, that's the amount of money that we have. Additionally, we have $10,000 in the contracted services line item today, but another $10,000 will allow us to start moving in the direction that we haven't been moving in to satisfy financial needs that we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions or thoughts from the board? I think that's a fantastic idea to get us on the track that you had mentioned. So any thoughts or ideas from the board? Time to thank you for presenting us tonight for your, in taking the audit report findings and looking at what we need to move forward in that future. And I appreciate your work in presenting it and for the leadership you're showing us. And thank you very much.
Yes, likewise, I recognize you before for your outstanding leadership and motivation to move forward with papers like these. I'd like to highlight that the document in front of us specifically addresses starting work on deficiencies, which is the very first thing we need to do. And we roundly agree that will occur. I would like to highlight that Scott has presented his vision, but we have actually had very little conversation about it. The Finance Committee needs to sit down and go through all the potential future things that we can do, which Scott has described. And that's something in our future. So the request here, as it is indicated in the paper, is to transfer $10,000. And the Finance Committee fully supports it.
Are there any thoughts or comments from the board? Any from the public? Mr. Kennedy? Can you come up to the mic, Dave? Because they can't hear you from online.
My question is, Dave Kennedy, my question to Scott is, before you commit to hiring any additional personnel or hiring, to work through the discrepancies in the audit, will the VOC have the list of who you're hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Yeah, with that question, I'd just like to highlight, we haven't even defined scope of work yet. So we're only at the very beginning. We're not anywhere near going out, you know, with RFPs for the work or anything like that. So I gave the correct answer, the VOC will be on board.
Well, if the, if they need to, certainly the VOC would be informed, but if what they're requesting tonight is for, to contract services for assistance with this, it doesn't necessarily need board approval.
Scott just said, yes, to Mr. Kennedy, so we need a.
It's informing the board, but it doesn't need board approval for hiring a contracted service. I wouldn't need to get this started.
That is correct. And we will inform the board what we're doing in terms of the plan moving forward. There will be phone calls made as early as tomorrow. But the board will be informed.
Right, to clarify, you're talking about contracted services, not hiring an employee.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I have a question again. Why won't the board be notified if you're hiring contracted services? Again, it gets back to transparency within the township. Why would you, for the fact? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we have a variety of contracted services that the township has, that staff engages various professionals, and a lot of those decisions are not formal board action, but do come through budgetary transfers like this, or are approved through the, the checks that are processed every few weeks and are also determined through board appointments of various professionals.
I think I could assure that whoever Scott and Randy's staff decide to, to work with as a contracted service, they're going to be a well-known and reputable firm. And certainly, they'll let the board know who they chose and why, but it's not a board decision to pick that firm. I think that was the point I was trying to get across.
Yes, I'll offer clarification. Again, the immediate need versus the long-term vision with Scott Adeline. Here's how I understand it. We have an immediate need to start working on the deficiencies, and the finance department needs to sit there. and the finance department needs specific support for its current operations. That certainly falls within contract services, which the finance department should be able to go out and acquire those services.
Absolutely.
Right, a long-term vision, that's what I say. We haven't developed a scope of work for this long-term vision. And we have quite a bit more discussion with the Finance Committee to do that. And that's another matter to get, it's much larger scope, more forward looking into the future.
And I think ultimately that that long-term vision wouldn't be limited to the Finance Committee, but to the full board is sharing that information. But for the short term, it certainly makes sense, like Commissioner Walk said, to move forward with contracting services to help get us to where we need to go.
Yes, that's correct. And to address specific concerns about transparency, phase three of this project has many projects outlined in the realm of transparency. And has some examples of things that could occur in the future. Include a map view of capital projects on the website. That is one possibility that can occur. Another is investment policies. Another is forecast and scenario planning. Another is using technology so that residents can log into a website so that they can see where money goes. So the goal of us requesting $10,000 from financials, finance salaries and wages to contracted services is in no way a reflection that we stand for any sort of dishonesty or not in the direction of transparency. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? In the chat? I'd like to make a motion that we transfer $10,000 from finance salaries and wages to contracted services for the needs as outlined by. So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I roll call both?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. All right, next this evening for consideration of possible action, we have a motion to approve a one-year extension of the storage maintenance contract with erosion control corporation. Hi, Herb.
Good evening, commissioners. We respectfully requesting a motion to approve a one-year extension of the contract. We reserve the rights to extend it, renew the contract period through two additional one-year terms if the contractor agrees to hold the current price, which he has agreed to. And this is to take care of the maintenance and the cleaning of our reservoir, PPNL Tower. And Peter wrote that. So this one-year extension would be for just the outside inspection and the cleaning of the outside of the inside and outside of it this year. So this one-year extension would just be for the outside. Which if you go through the, if you look at the comp, it's a task. It's roughly around $31,420. If you add them all up for the outside cleaning and the inspection, we do budget $40,000 just in case we do need any repairs done to it also.
And this is imperative for the EPA reform?
Correct. Yes, we are mandated to clean them inside it.
Thanks, Herb. Any other questions or comments for her on this particular request from the board? Any from the public? Any in the chat? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the one-year extension of the storage maintenance contract with erosion control corporation? We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second from Commissioner Long? Can I roll call both?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton? Aye. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Herb. All right.
One more.
Stick around, right? Next this evening for consideration of possible action, we have a motion to approve a one-year extension of the sewer main repairs contract with utility services group.
Correct. We are just, public words, respectfully requesting a motion to approve a one-year extension for this contract. We reached out to USP and they have agreed to hold the current contract pricing. This is also another thing we report to EPA. This is all our eye on eye and our sewer main pipes, any cracks or breaks or deficiencies. They, they're an outside firm that comes in and corrects the issues for us. We TV them, we identify them, we let them know where we want them to go.
Thank you, Herb.
And typically, we budget around $300,000 a year.
Any questions or comments for her on this particular request from the board? Any from the public? In the chat? All right, do I hear a motion to approve a one-year extension of sewer main repairs contract with utility services group? No. Do I hear a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly? Can I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Walk, second, and can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton? Aye. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries.
And just so you know, USP is actually moving in Tuesday to do the 2020 broadcast. Please be prepared.
Great, thank you. Awesome. All right, next this evening for consideration of possible action, we have a motion to approve sewer allocation request for proposed independent living apartments in Luther Crest. Mr. Mike, welcome.
Scott, if you wanted.
Are you guys going to go into Psalm or something?
Do you want to intro like a Star Wars? We live. Carl. It's hard to do any comments on sewer.
In a galaxy, always a faraway.
As exciting as it says, it's a sewer allocation.
Mike, I can tell you can make it exciting, go for it.
All right, Diacom with Luther Crest. Luther Social Ministries is undertaking a development project at the northern end of its existing Luther Crest Retirement Community located at 800 Hospital Road. The project will include the construction of a multi-story 37,500 square foot building with the addition to accommodate 74 additional independent living apartments and then expanded commons area as well as other. Diacom is respectfully requesting Southway all township board of commissioners approve an additional 6,502 gallons of sewer flow or 74 EDUs, which is equivalent dwelling units, through Diacom's existing public sewer service connection based on 74 apartment units at the Southway all township rate of 223 gallons per EDU. That's it.
That note, like, grand finale or?
It's again sewer, so.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the board for Mike on this particular request? Any from the public? Any in the chat?
We have something in the chat. It is Anna Hatton from HRG is here for Luther Crest. If there's any questions for her.
Not unless she can like sing a tune and.
Right, right. But no comments.
Questions for HRG? Appears to be none. Thank her very much for offering. Thank you, sir. All right, that being said, do I hear a motion to approve sewer allocation request for proposed independent living apartments in Luther Crest? We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Commissioner Sutton, can I roll call?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mike. All right, last but not least, on motions this evening, we have the Woodlawn Fire Department, a motion to proceed with new camera security. Commissioner, how are you?
I am all. Good evening, commissioners. One of the first thing tonight is to move forward with the project and completion of fire alarm and security system upgrade for the Woodlawn Fire Department. This was a project that was capital improvements for 2021. They're finishing off this project with the installation of the security cameras. And in front of you, we're looking for the under capital 17,932, 32 for the completion of this project.
Thank you, sir. And this was discussed with the chiefs and the monitor fire subcommittees?
Yes, we had this under subcommittee and we did have this fire chief. Yes.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments for Chris this evening? I know we have very searched in the audience as well from the board.
Is there ongoing maintenance, like as far as?
Yes, as far as included in this is that with the cameras would be three-year license fee. That would be something we have to work on the budget. So that would be every three-year renewable license fee on camera.
But I mean, is this like monitored cameras, like?
As far as monitoring? Actually, monitoring is, is the house or is that why they also? It's just they have a city house monitoring, so yes. It is a monitoring system, and if I'm correct, it is a recording system. So we'll be able to go back into the files and go back in and look and see what was picked up by the cameras.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have a question. I did go, the capital budget, excuse me, line item on this one actually said green slash wood, camera security. Does that mean both fire stations are going to have a similar?
Dr. Matt Plonis, who's been doing the IT work, has, is with Woodlawn, has been doing a lot of work with the IT stuff and security at Woodlawn, and has also been touching base with the other departments for upgrading their systems and moving forward in technology, like I have to create a point and setting up the mobile data terminal units that are on the apparatus. As far as this project goes, no, not, this is just the Woodlawn station, it's not Green Walls.
So Green Walls also have a project this year? I just want it clear anyway.
I don't have anything on Green Walls for the project this year for security systems.
Right, thank you.
Hey, Chris, this is Matthew Plonis.
From the public?
Can you hear me, Chris?
Do I hear a motion then to move forward to proceed with the new camera security system for the Woodlawn Fire Department as described? There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Walk. Can I roll call both, please?
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next this evening, we'll go right into correspondence and information items under boards and commissions. We have, I did ask Randy to work with Tracy to get the board an updated list, hopefully here sometime in the near future of all the applicants for any open boards or commissions that we have so we could look at interviewing process. But at this point, just as a reference, we still have one vacancy. It's an alternate position for the Civil Service Commission and the Landscape Shading Tree Commission, we have two vacancies. Park and Recreation Board, one vacancy. Is that still the Portland position, Randy?
That is not. The chairman of the board has announced his resignation at the end of the year, so.
Correct, I apologize, yes. So that's one, a hard vacancy. And then the zoning hearing board, one vacancy and alternate position. I'd also like to note that on Monday, October 11th, we will have a VOC budget workshop from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. On Monday, October 11th, we're also going to have a park and rec board at 7:00 p.m. You can spend your whole night here if you wanted to. On Wednesday, October 13th, we have a Civil Service Commission at 1:00 p.m. On Thursday, October 14th, we have a board of commissioners budget workshop from 4:00 to 7:00. And on Monday, October 18th, we have Green Advisory Council at 6:00 p.m. And on Tuesday, October 19th, we have a VOC budget workshop from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. One thing that is not on here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our continuation of the conditional use hearing is scheduled for?
October 28th.
October 28th.
Eighteenth.
I'm sorry, eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I thought it was eighteen.
October 18th, October 25th, and November 11th. Get that right? And those will be held here, as township knows, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, thank you. All right, here's our question on the workshops. I know they're beginning at 4:00 p.m. Randy, or whoever is CD maybe, where are we with the go-to meeting platform? As far as the audio, have we made any progress?
So we haven't, the microphones are still on order. So we're looking at potentially an alternate source. I think things have been generally backed up across all supply chains, so we're dealing with that. We've been focusing on getting the meetings, minutes, and videos linked embedded in the website for the time being for this this group of meetings until we get to Live Manager and we start getting that up. So that's kind of what, where the focus has been. So there should be links to each recording on that meeting page as well as if, on the screen, you can see the calendar widget has been changed. So the agendas are right there and the minutes are right there. So that's kind of been the focus, getting that stuff cleared up. And until we get the microphones, you know, we're kind of making the best we can with the extender cables and whatnot. But Live Manager is definitely next on the list, which will be the feed from up here and ties directly into the sound system. And that's kind of the next step in figuring out. And, you know, we have to do testing and trial runs and whatnot with that.
So initially then, next week as we start the budget meetings, it'll still be go-to meeting?
Well, still, yeah, I don't, yeah, it won't be ready by Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Just got a few items on, it's going to be worth that we're not already covered this evening. Regarding the 2020 audit, the auditor will complete the 2020 audit by late October. And we expect the auditor to reset the 2020 audit to the VOC on November 11th. Regarding internal controls audit, which we've talked about here previously, the auditor recommended that the township should complete an internal controls audit to ensure that a complete definitive list of all finance deficiencies have been identified. Southside all mainly, Scott is having discussions with the auditor to develop best forward and the scope of work. I know we've had some discussions about whether it would be an internal controls audit or something else. I don't think we need to go into that here because that's a discussion we need to have with the finance committee. So I'm using the term internal controls audit as a placeholder for whatever you decide to do. 2021 bond financing works well in progress. Scott's doing a great job on this as well. And the next discussion on the subject will actually occur at the budget workshop meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Walk. Any other other comments in regards to boards and commissions?
Just a question. Somebody mentioned the fire subcommittee meeting on Monday. Is there an update for the board meeting?
Oh, yes, good question. So Chris has left, so I will report out on that. We discussed preliminary budget discussions, how that would all pan out. The chiefs will be meeting with Fire Commissioner Kitcheravich. I believe Chief Torneo might also be involved in those discussions or not? No, just Chris regarding their potential budgets and talking those through before we get to the official budget hearing that deals with the fire companies. In addition, there was, Scott presented briefly on the, and Randy, on the American Rescue Plan funds and the limitations and expectations for those as well, to be clear with the fire departments. So it was preliminary discussion, just preparing the chiefs and getting them ready to present their potential budgets to Fire Commissioner Kitcheravich to be prepared for the, I believe it is October, what day is theirs? October 26th? Is there a budget hearing?
I believe it's the 26th.
I believe it's the 26th. Thank you. You have it?
What's that date again? October?
October 26th is when the fire departments will be presenting, Chris Kitcheravich will be presenting. Yeah, during the budget. Okay. Any questions from the public? And the chairman?
Nope.
Um, I think we already went through the public notice of the budget workshop schedule. I read through those. Did you have anything else for any wanted to add to that?
No, after the schedule.
Okay. And the, we already referenced the, oh, sorry.
I did promise the board a budget package will be in your inbox sometime on Friday.
Fine. Thank you, Scott.
Fun weekend.
Yeah. Um, and although we had just previously talked about the public hearing dates regarding the premier century luxury apartments. So moving on, we don't have anything scheduled for direction and discussion items this evening. However, Randy, did you have anything you'd like to update us on on where Stan?
Just a real brief update. Continue to work with our engineer for Michael Baker. I believe I reported out at the last S update for this that we were under a little confusion with the Department of Environmental Protection to see if we had to resubmit our permit. I have some good news that we were directed to reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers. And we do not have to reissue our permit, which is a huge relief. So the engineers are moving forward with that permitting process. And that's kind of where this project stands.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments for Randy regarding where Stan's status?
Randy, is there any timeline?
I can certainly look into that. I was not given a timeline, but it sounds like it's going to be a lot faster, obviously, than if you have to resubmit the permit. So I'm hopeful within the next four, eight weeks. But I can certainly keep the board abreast of that situation.
That'd be helpful, Randy. Thanks, Randy. All right. Next this evening, we will have our minutes for consideration and possible action. First, under minutes, we have our August 18th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. These were tabled at the September 1st meeting. So we do have them up for discussion this evening. I'll just share with board my thoughts on this. I still stand stand firm on my original comments that I had in the September 1st meeting. That we move forward with the original minutes as prepared minus the additions, the red. That was provided for Tracy. I know Commissioner Walk, you were going to check or somebody was going to check on the statement. Commissioner Walk stated that there is no information in the auditor report that attributes to the 2016, 2019 audit problems to the 2012 embezzlement. I'm not sure if that interpretation is correct, but I, my opinion is we stick with the original meeting minutes minus the red additions.
And I'll open it up for further comments or thoughts. Here's that one comment on page three. The red that's there is my comment. And it looks like I actually quoted the statement from the auditor's report. And in the original meeting minutes, the first half of that quote was included, but the second statement was not. So the red that's there is just clarifying the full statement that I read from the auditor's report. That's, that's a full quote. The red, the red, the red is my full quote from his report was, they belong together, those two sentences. Leave this one.
Yeah, my comment is the reason I added the red about the audit report. Basically, here's what happened. The auditor gave the audit report noted that there were many deficiencies. Then we have a citizen come forward and he asked a question, what are the deficiencies? And then the first answer that was given named the embezzlement as a deficiency. And then I followed by saying, the audit report that lists all the deficiencies does not include anything about the embezzlement. This is the report, 10, 12 pages long, extremely detailed, doesn't include anything about the embezzlement. So I felt it was important to provide correct information to the public. So that they have a clear understanding about what the order report said about deficiencies. And that's why I asked they add that section into the meeting minutes.
I definitely disagree with the statement that says the problems that caused the 2012 embezzlement were analyzed and corrected in 2012 and 2013. He said that's absolutely incorrect.
All right. So we discussed that at the last meeting. And at the last meeting, I said I would agree to strike those two cents.
I, I.
Which would, which would mean that my statement that Commissioner Walk stated that there is no information in the audit report that attributes the 2016 through 19 audit problems to the 2012 embezzlement. That is a fact. That's not an opinion. It's not an interpretation. It's simply a fact. To clear the record of what this order report says and does not say.
Oh, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Walk, but I, my, my, my motion would be to stick with the minutes as they were originally presented minus the red. I believe that the, the narrative is there for anybody to listen to on the record. And that's why we do that to be clear and concise. There's no interpretation. That's my recommendation.
I just have one follow up comment. The audio is very difficult to hear. I've heard that from a number of residents while they're listening to the meeting in real time. And then anyone's gone back, including myself, to edit these minutes to hear the conversation. It is extremely difficult knowing the topic to understand what was said. The written meeting minutes are the official record of our meeting, of the report from the auditor on our half to audits. And I would, if Commissioner Walk is agreeing to take out the last two sentences that he does as more commentary than fact, I would make a motion that we would remove those two sentences and keep the rest written description of the auditor's presentation to this board. Well, we already have a motion on the floor. I made a motion that we accept the minutes as originally provided minus the red. So we have to act on that motion first. If that does not pass, we'll move to the next motion. So you're not willing to allow my second sentence. I quoted two sentences. So you're going to allow half of that, which isn't the full comment from the the whole thing is crossed out. This is crossed out. That was what was, what's crossed out was what was in initially. And the red is the actual comment from you guys.
My, my whole point in all this is, and I talked about it at length at the last meeting, is we, you know, we go round and round on meeting minutes and we are not honestly, you know, we're getting into this much detail that was on this particular court. Because everybody asked it, put my information in, put my information in. It excuse the narrative. And that's what the, the audio is for. Somebody wants to hear it, they listen to it. You can't hear it.
Well, I, Tracy listens to it to do the meeting minutes, so you must be able to hear it. I went back and tried to hear. It was very, very difficult. So you're saying that you will not add one sentence for me? Is that my understanding? I'm asking for one sentence, not a paragraph. That's why we have these conversations.
Just reverse the meeting minutes, you know, considering we get to this topic. What else can I hide kind of played over? But certainly I really don't have a preference on whether, to be honest, whether my comments are already in there. It makes no difference to me. You know, I think for me, just as I look at priorities, level of importance, just in my own life. Recently, I had an event happen in my life that I'm, I'm stopped and realized what's really, what's really important in the end. So I guess I'm fine with whatever we can do just to kind of compromise him before I will agree to. But on the board also, I hope we can come to an agreement that for these meeting minutes, that we can come to some sort of agreement to say what to go back to, or I don't know if we're able to there, but let's go to a common reading answer strictly. This is what happened. Vote taking, move on. No public comment, no comment whatsoever. That would be my perspective. Just in my experience, that's typically how meeting minutes are done, you know, again. So I would just hope that we can at least then come to that compromise to say, going forward, we're all just rules. This is what we're going to do. It's just a matter of fact, and that's it. Make it easier on Tracy and all of everyone else, everyone here. Didn't have to go through this time after time. That would be my, folks don't become that agreement. So I don't, if Mike wants that comment, it makes no difference to me.
Commissioner Long, I, I, I agree with you completely. My original concern is creating a narrative. And to answer your question, Commissioner Kelly, you know, you did read directly from the report. You're, you're right. And the original piece is just finishing that thought, reading directly from the report. It's not your interpretation. It's, it's nothing of a sort. So I definitely would agree to that. But in regards to Commissioner Walk's narrative in the beginning. Unless it is, you know, verified, the sentence from the problems that caused the 2012 embezzlement to the end of the red there, I don't agree with because it's not accurate and that's his interpretation. But if it moves this thing along like you had mentioned, keep the one statement in there that says Commissioner Walk stated that there is no information in the auditor report that attributes the 2016, 2019 audit problems to the 2012 embezzlement. That's your opinion. I still don't think that should be in there either, because that's your, I mean, unless, you know, it's your interpretation. But I'd be fine with that, but nothing else other than finishing Commissioner Walk's statement.
Thank you for agreeing to that, but I'm sorry, I have to repeat that sentence. It is not an opinion. It's not an interpretation. This is the document.
Okay.
You apparently have it written because this does not include the work. It is a fact. It is not an opinion or an interpretation.
Okay.
Either way, can we?
I want to withdraw your motion and then make a new motion.
I will make a motion. I will withdraw my original motion. I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes with only one statement, which is Commissioner Walk stated that there are no information in the auditor report that attributes to the 2016, 2019 audit problems to the 2012 embezzlement, nothing else. And then finish Commissioner, and then finish Commissioner Kelly's statement on page three. As referenced, Commissioner Kelly read the paragraph in the report to the end, which said may not have been provided to the BOC. To finish the statement. That would be my motion. So I'll second that motion. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan and a second from Commissioner Kelly. Going back to the original meeting minutes, only with the additions that I had mentioned. I will call both, please.
Just for, I'm sorry, Commissioner Morgan, just to point of clarity, the going forward then, we're all on the same page that we're going to be matter of fact for the meeting minutes and hopefully not be in this vote again. Is that the?
I, I think you'll see that the subsequent meeting minutes do just that.
That's good.
Do we have a motion and a second on the floor? Have a roll call, please, committee.
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right. So moving forward then, we have our September 1st, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those said? Which is very exciting. I have motioned on the floor to approve said meeting minutes from Commissioner Long. Do I hear a second? Commissioner Kelly, can I roll call please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. And last but not least, we have our meeting minutes from September 15th. Are there any questions or comments on those meeting minutes from the board?
I'm going to make the motion. They're approved?
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Long. Do I hear a second? Mr. Kelly, I will.
Commissioner Walk? Aye. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton? Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. That was fantastic, board. Thanks for all working together. Wonderful. All right, next this evening, we have courtesy of the floor. Is there anybody in the audience for courtesy of the floor? Oh. Monica in the back personally, Brian?
Well, the Hages 77 Penns crossing. I guess we can respectfully disagree going back to the meeting minutes, I think, the topic of the audit. But it's really important and we really need to be as clear as possible so the public understands what went on. People are really upset about it. And I guess I agree with Commissioner Walk, and I don't see the harm of adding that sentence. But I do see your point, Commissioner Long, going back and forth. So what's the harm in adding it? And the other thing I wanted to say is I missed two BOC meetings in September. And it was important for me to be present. So I attended one virtually and I attended one live phone. And I will say that I really couldn't understand most of what was going on. There were some commissioners that were more clear than others. Actually, Commissioner Walk, I couldn't really understand you at all either. Commissioner Seton couldn't understand you. Commissioner Long, you went in and out. Commissioner Morgan, I did hear you. But there is a lot to be desired, I feel. And the phone was almost worse than the virtual. And I do hear from people that they do try to call in and they do want to participate. And they get so frustrated because they can't understand anything. So that's it. Thank you for leaving me here. You're welcome.
Just one quick comment, Ms. Hodges, just to your first comment, wasn't hopefully communicated. I wasn't saying I don't care about the audits or actually my actual comment was I don't care whether Commissioner Walk's comments were in or not. My point there was just, let's move along more. So hopefully that was communicated, but I appreciate your comment.
Excellent. Thank you. And as Dave Manhart mentioned, we're, we're well on our way to fixing the audio and to mirror Commissioner Long's comments. The audit is very important and that's why I have the comments I had. I think it's very important that the narrative is clear. I agree to Commissioner Walk's statement, the one statement. But anything else that's anybody's opinion or narrative needs to be not included because it could change the, the opinion or the narrative for anybody reading it if they don't listen to the full, full discussion. So I think that's very important, but thank you for your comments. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Brian, welcome.
Brian, 1273 Eck Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian. I apologize.
No, it's, it's separate.
Oh, it's a separate track. I apologize. You're up, Brian. It's all you. Sorry about that.
I already announced it. Remember, it's a very direct place. As the warehouses on the private sport and Eck come online and the trucks start rolling, I believe the township take a hard look at the truck routes being utilized. There's an emergency area of concern on Chappan's Road at Church Road, the intersection there. Trucks are proceeding west on Church from 309 and merging onto Chappans. It's G around the challenge where you can't see to the right. So I've seen it twice myself, trucks just pull out in front of cars traveling west on Chappan's Road. Picture of it, if you care to see that as well, of just waiting because they can't see. When you're in a traffic trailer with a sleeper and a trailer, you can't paint that just the way the geometry of the road is. So I think the township needs to study that intersection, the traffic impact study for the development, 341 pages. Never studied that intersection because it's not considered to be part of the truck route that was proposed. The truck route is supposed to go up to 309 to Chappan's. The truck route's supposed to go up to 309 to Chappens, not through Church. It's, I'm trying to avoid an accident. Yeah.
Would you mind sharing the picture with?
This is me waiting behind a truck for about four minutes, four to five minutes before I just decided to pull out. I was just about to get out of the truck itself. I'm looking at my truck, I'm looking at the traffic trail. I was about to go out and try to help. But this radio, he's stuck. Because he can't, physically can't see. Just thought I'd bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I think, and maybe Herb and Chief Dorni and you guys can follow up with Brian and.
We'll look into it. We have a meeting set up for Brian.
Excellent. Do we have something?
I have something in the chat. Jacob Roth, 1499 White Oak Road. It's been almost two months since the auditor's report was presented to the BOC. When will the auditor's report with the deficiencies be posted on the township website?
I can answer that. It is customary in the state of Pennsylvania. Extended research on this. As well as last week, I attended the Government Finance Officers Association Conference in Pennsylvania State College. I had multiple discussions with multiple directors of finance from different townships in the state of PA as well as other municipalities like water and sewer authorities. For us to put deficiencies on the website is to set a precedent that has not been set and is not set in other municipalities. And therefore, I do not think we should as well. I think we have been forthright in putting the audit reports up there. The audit reports do outline where things need to be fixed. And the plan that we have for corrective action will also outline what needs to occur. So as other townships do not do this, I don't think we should as well.
I have a question, Scott.
Yeah.
When you have these conversations, did the people you spoke with explain to you why it's not done other than it's not done? We don't want to set a precedent. What's the reason why it's not done or why it shouldn't be done?
It just normally doesn't occur in the government route. So there's not another township that I've found whose website shows every single audit deficiency. There's not like a webpage that shows, here's a list of the efficiencies.
The audit report is posted.
Correct. All the audits are on the website, and our monthly financial reports are also on there.
Jacob Roth, thank you, Scott. Would I be able to access the report through a right-to-know request?
Yes.
Attorney Zader, are you able to clarify whether that is something that would be released?
I would simply say that the Right to Know Act presumes that everything is disposable unless there's an exception. Off the top of my head, sitting here, I'm unaware of an exception that the township could in its discretion exercise. But if the board wishes me to look at whether there is an exception, I'm determined to use it on the ribbon that's sitting around there.
And to further clarify, the title of the report is SAS 114.
Thank you, Scott. I guess I just have a comment, Scott. Thank you for sharing that information. I just think it's interesting that no one does post it because the auditor general does post our pension audits and deficiencies are posted online for everyone to read at state level for each municipality. It's just a curious thing that one entity in the state, and I've seen this in a lot of different areas, that consistency is not there even on the state level. And how, for example, the state auditor general does their reporting and posts, and how townships do. Municipal law doesn't speak to. It's kind of a rare area, I guess. It might be a lot of cases.
Yeah. So my main thought is, thank you to Minister Roth for asking his question. Thank you for, Scott, for sharing your recently acquired research. I don't think we should do anything about this tonight, but I think it's something we should keep in mind for what we want to do in future.
Personally, just from my perspective, you know, it'd be like, you mind your business, and I got a bad review. There's no reason I get bad reviews. But suppose I quit. It'd be like me posting it on my website, especially me to say, look at this, and see what happens. And I think personally, I don't think we need to draw that attention right on the website. When the information is available, someone wants to find it. I don't think, you know, putting flashers on something would be appropriate for the township, which we are.
I guess my only thought about this, because I have been in this book, the example you know is referring to your business, which you own, and you own the funding, right? This is the government. This is our municipality. This is our financial report. And by that, I don't mean the five of us sitting here. I don't mean the South Light Hill Township Government. This report, the audit, is the people. This report belongs to the people. And if the people want access to it, it's good to know they can access it at least the other way to know. So I think there's a difference between the business example and this municipal government example.
I'm not saying it's a direct comparison. Personally, I like to keep things as simple as possible. It's simply a layman's perspective to say, this is what it would be compared to. I'm not saying a direct 100% comparative comparison. I'm saying it would be equivalent to that in my mind. Therefore, I would not support.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'll just make one more extra comment. And we can, as a business owner, you probably wouldn't want people to know this. As a government and as a commissioner accountable for the township finances, I want people to know the state of affairs for our finances. I want them to know what's going on that's positive. I want them to know what's going on that's not so positive, where corrective action is required. And I want them to know that the accountable people in this township are going to take the corrective actions to fix those deficiencies. I think it should be completely open because I think we, the government, owe it to the people to be completely open and transparent with them on all issues, but in particular, especially for township finances.
Anything else this evening for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Kennedy.
So going to address my question to Scott. Let's hear the night of the audit. And I may have the wording incorrect, but he indicated that it was a financial audit. Correct? It wasn't. I'm sorry.
Financial statement.
Financial statement audit. It wasn't a corrective action audit. Okay. So if it was a corrective action audit, that report would be submitted to the BOC and to you and the BOC Township Manager. Correct. So that report then would be public. So why would the BOC, and they can do it next year, not right now because you're working on it, have a corrective action audit taken in the township? So the township residents can see, as Mr. Wal pointed out, what corrective actions need to be taken within the township. It's the township residents that are paying their taxes to this township. Government entity, they should be entitled to see not only the financial part in a position within the, as we do you say, Mr. Wal, in your company, this is their company as a whole, South Light Hill Township. But also corrective action need to be taken. That should be public too. So again, it was a financial audit. Let's get a corrective action audit, as Mr. Wal possibly pointed out. Thank you. Another question. Another question. 22 years ago, I got elected to the Bartley School Board. And I met with an individual at that time. And they said to me, well, that's the way we've always done it. And I said to that individual, who was no longer on the school, was a tremendous representative at the time. I said, don't ever say that to me again. It's how we've always done it. Okay? Because I don't want to hear that. We're moving forward, not backward. So other municipalities may not have done it, as you said. But that doesn't mean there's a law or ordinance or governance that says they can't do it. So maybe we'll be the first to move. Thank you.
Anybody else this evening for courtesy of the floor?
I have a couple of things that I want to mention. Couple of things I want to mention that have been a concern of mine, they have to do with code enforcement. One would be the short-term rentals. Sometimes non-Airbnb. I think we ought to address that specifically if it is being done for not sharing a house, if a house, any that doesn't exist in the township, that house is being leased for Airbnb as a whole. That thing should be addressed. It's one of the things. The other thing that is of a concern of mine is I have seen popping up all kinds of signs, unfortunately, some of them British state signs, that are freestanding and they're way oversized. Or by, you know, they're often just anchored into the ground with very inappropriate mechanisms. So I think these two things, maybe the board should consider talking about it. And I'm more than happy to hear any comments from the board. Any comments?
My only comment would be to Dave. I know when George Kenny was here, that was something that was on his radar, and he did go out on the weekends and pick up signs that were put up. And I know he's not put up any longer. I'm not asking for him to do extra work on the stat page. I'm just saying sure that. But I know that that's something the township hasn't addressed for quite some time in the past. And maybe we.
Commissioner Kelly, I think the signs that we're addressing were signs, direction signs, or smaller regular signs.
No, there were also businesses and real estate signs.
Yeah. But I'm talking, there are also bigger ones. Also.
In all of them. We used to, George used to.
Did he use the removal?
Yes.
Correct.
He had a bit of.
So we have an ordinance as to the size of the sign.
There are.
And there's still code enforcement that.
There are enforced, there is regulation on signage, and there's a temporary sign ordinance, and certain things can be allowed. So we can certainly put it on our radar as we're driving around the town. But if there's a specific example or something that you come across, send it to our offices, and we'll circulate it and find out whether it's appropriate or not. With regards to George Kenny's work, he had a bit of a vendetta. So he took it personally. Yeah, that was his Saturday morning routine, was picking up signs, so.
Yeah, I think I'm aware of the signs that George has. As many of us are.
Yep.
But the signs that are not addressing, or signs that. Not.
So yeah, like there's a.
For instance, I'll give you an example. Sign for peace that has been on Tilling Street, the shopping center, Westwood, major office. Needs to be there wherever it's used. And there's been others.
Yeah, there's the order.
I talked about enforcement. And I believe he mentioned to me that reasonable ordinance for the size of the sign, but the reasonable ordinance for temporary signs. As long as it's a temporary sign, you can put anything you want on what I have.
There, the sign ordinance is pretty complex. There's a lot of pieces to it. And we can certainly look at it and, you know, try and get a better handle on the size of the signs. A lot of times municipalities will regulate, you know, temporary real estate signs. You're allowed a certain square footage, and, you know, they're up for a certain duration and things like that. We can certainly go through the ordinance and look at the temporary sign and temporary signs and real estate signs and go through that and get a better handle on it. I personally should probably do that. And we can make some recommendations on how to tighten some of that.
Also looking at the safety of it.
Absolutely.
Sometimes you see a sign, send bags in the parking, holding it. Very loud or safe.
Right, right.
And again, I'll go back to the Airbnb. Short-term.
Yeah, we.
Something that we should look at.
We're looking at it at a staff level. Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to the sign question. I was just made aware this week that we have a request for investigation form on our website. If there's a code issue, so if anyone has, sees a sign that seems it's been there a long time or seems inappropriate, then the best thing to do would be fill out that form and submit it.
Absolutely. So that's the process that it brings out the code enforcement officer to look into any code issue. And that either gets transferred to the appropriate enforcement and gets resolved and looked into through that RFI form.
And does that also apply to signs that are stapled to utility poles?
Those are not.
They're what? Not.
They're not. There used to be a ladder in George's car where he would go and like.
He would just pull them off.
Yeah, he would pull.
Same thing, a request for investigation.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Anything in the chat? In the chat? All right. That being said, the board does need to meet in executive session again to discuss personnel matters after this meeting. But I would make a motion that we adjourn. And then. Oh, we do? Do we really? Are you sure? All right. Let's skip that part, sorry. My apologies. So our invoice and the purchase acquisitions have been reviewed by the Township Manager and the Director of Finance for your motion to authorize that our checks be issued to the air bill system. Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly for her second. Second from Commissioner Seton. Can I roll call vote?
Commissioner Wal.
Aye.
Commissioner Wal.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, motion carries. My apologies, I almost skipped that one. Again, we have an executive session planned for after this meeting, so I would make a motion that we adjourn. I would be by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Kelly. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wal.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.